Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I would finally like to call the meeting to order. The special meeting of the Planning Commission. It's Thursday, July 20th, and it is 7:25. We have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Lowell?
I am here.
Commissioner Baker?
Here.
Commissioner Sims?
Here.
Vice Chair Korsec?
President.
Chair Barnes?
Here.
Commissioner Lowell, can you lead us in the pledge, please?
Please stand, place your hand over your heart, and follow me.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. At this time, we need to approve the agenda.
I'll motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion from Commissioner Lowell, second from Commissioner Baker. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the consent calendar, and being no items, we will...
The minutes are on the consent calendar.
I'm sorry, yes. Apologies. Approval of the minutes from the meeting of May 25th.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from the May 25th.
I'll second.
Motion approved from Commissioner Sims, second from Commissioner Lowell. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Now to the public comments portion of the meeting. The procedures are printed on the bottom of the agenda. Anyone wishing to speak, please fill out a request to speak form and give it to Erica. Your comments will be limited to three minutes. Do we have any speaker slips?
We do. Rafael Bugeras.
Bugeras.
Good evening. It seems so long ago, May 25th, since we've seen each other. Good evening, Chair. Good evening, Commissioners. Good evening, staff, residents, and our guests. It's a pleasure to be back in the chamber once again with the Commissioners and the staff so we could continue to have Moreno Valley go forward as it has. I'm excited for some of the things that I saw on the agenda for tonight and... But I want to talk about some of the things that I've seen already approved throughout the city, all the constructions, sites, things going up, things being built, dirt being turned. That's the thing about our city. We have plenty of dirt that we can turn and make something out of it so people can go to work, people can live in it, and people can see. This is important to see what you put up and how it's put up. So what inspired me to come and talk on this non-agenda issue was something that I read that Alan Block approved and Rick Sander has it on the agenda. And it talks about the Planning Commission specifically finds that what they do is about facts that are set forth to bring truth and correction. This is one of the things that I enjoy coming to this Planning Commission month after month to see what they're going to do and how they're going to, and how you're going to receive it because I only get three minutes to tell you how I feel about what I saw and what I think, but you two have the opportunity to go through it for a little while and sort it all out so the city that's hearing can understand what you're going to approve and what they have done to make the city better. Our city is growing. You can see the room full tonight. It's a beautiful thing to see people that we don't know that come to our city to develop, to have their dreams fulfilled. It's a great feeling when I drive around my city and when people ask me what I do, I tell them what I do, and I do it with a free heart. And I thank them, and I thank you guys for all the things that you already have approved. May we be blessed tonight.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Having no other speakers on the list, we will move to the non-public hearing items, which there are none.
There are none.
Next up, public hearing items. Case one is PEN 16-0153, Main Street Transitional Care Facility. The applicant is MS Moreno Valley LLC. You have a staff report?
Yes, I'd like to introduce Jeff Bradshaw, Associate Planner, for the staff report.
Good evening, Chair Barnes, members of the Planning Commission. The item presented to you this evening is a request by the applicant, MS Moreno Valley LLC, to develop a 50,000-square-foot, 90-room, one-story transitional care facility. This would take place on a parcel of approximately seven acres located at the... Located on the west side of Oliver Street at what was the intersection of Philary and Oliver. And just as a way of description, this is included in the staff report. I wanted to read this, I guess, as part of the presentation. This transitional care facility would be the first skilled nursing facility in the city of Moreno Valley. It would fulfill an important community need by providing transitional care to seniors in a facility that can serve as a bridge between hospital and living at home. This facility serves a different function when compared to longer-term assisted-living and or memory care facilities by providing short-term transitional therapy for community residents working with their physicians to return home after a hospital stay and to provide them with the best chance to minimize setbacks that could result later through readmission. And so this really is a different kind of a facility than we've seen here previously. The project is proposed, would include private rooms that would provide 24-hour nursing care. Each of the rooms would include, excuse me, amenities at the facility would include a dining room, kitchen rehabilitation therapy gym, seating areas, nourishment areas, and outdoor recreational areas for the residents of this facility. The project is proposed, would place the building with the main entrance oriented towards the north with access being provided to the site from Oliver Street and also from a shared private access road that is located between the, on an easement between the hospital, the Kaiser Hospital to the west, and this development. The architectural design for this... Architectural design for the facility includes an undulating or moving footprint for a low-profile building. The design of the building provides, through the use of different enhancements and treatments, provides visual interest along the long access of the building. Material uses a combination of different materials and color changes. Materials would include stucco lapped siding and metal-livered canopies. There is some variation in the roofline. Exterior finishes in combination with stone treatments, glazing, fascia, and metal awnings all work to help break up the long access and the facades of the facility. The project site, as I said, is located along the west side of Oliver Street. It is in a site that, with the topography, is relatively flat, that does slope gently towards the north. Project, again, is a seven-acre parcel. The general plan designation for this location is office. The zoning is office as well. And in the case of the development of a convalescent home, assisted living, or a use of this category, when the facility is within 300 feet of existing residential, then a conditional use permit is required, and that is why the conditional use permit application is being presented to you this evening. The project site also is located within the medical use overlay district, and so the use proposed is consistent with the city's vision for what should occur in the near vicinity of the County Regional Medical Center to the north or the Kaiser Hospital immediately to the west. Projects bounded by vacant land to the north, which is a portion of the Aquabella specific plan, Kaiser Hospital and Kaiser Office Buildings to the west, existing residential tract homes to the east, and Landmark Middle School to the northeast. The applicant worked very diligently with staff to come up with a design at this location that's consistent with the objectives of our general plan as well as satisfies the requirements of our municipal code. And so the design is presented to you this evening. Is consistent with requirements for parking, access, and conditioned to be consistent with our requirements for landscape and providing screening landscape and shade for the parking areas. Transitional Care Facility does fall under our jurisdiction, the city's jurisdiction, for review of the application, for approval of the application, and for review and approval of the site design. The facility itself, as a skilled nursing facility, falls under the jurisdiction of the Office of Statewide Health Planning, or OSHPOD, for plan check purposes and for issuance of the building permit for the structure itself. The city's had an opportunity to coordinate with OSHPOD. They're aware of the project, and they had an opportunity to review the proposed environmental documentation for the project. The city staff has prepared an initial study for this project, and through analysis of the project, determined that a mitigated negative declaration is appropriate for this project. This document represents the city's independent judgment and analysis. The project, as proposed and conditioned and with mitigation measures, will not have a significant effect on the environment. Studies that were prepared and included with this environmental document included a traffic impact study exemption request, cultural resource assessment, a biological assessment, preliminary studies for hydrology, a geotechnical, and a preliminary water quality management plan. Having reviewed the content of those studies and prepared the document that we have, staff would be recommending a certification of, or adoption, rather, of the mitigated NIGDEC and also certification of the monitoring program that's attached to the staff report this evening. Standard notice was provided for this project. There was a 20-day notice published in the newspaper for the environmental document. The site was also posted and notices sent to surrounding property owners. Out of that noticing effort, we did receive one comment letter from Highland Fairview, the ownership of the adjacent Aquabella specific plan, and I believe a copy of that letter was made available to you. Staffs had an opportunity to review the content of the letter, and we feel that the project is designed, presented to you this evening, and conditioned, does satisfy the requirements of our city municipal code. It is consistent with the general plan. The environmental documentation staff also feels is appropriate and complete and adequate to the project. The applicant did work with web engineers, their representative, and has provided an air quality and greenhouse gas study that they made available to this evening that further supports the conclusions that staff arrived at in the mitigated negative declaration. We did have an opportunity to meet with both the applicant and representatives from Highland Fairview to discuss what had been identified to the city as Highland Fairview's primary concerns about this project, and out of that meeting appeared to arrive at a resolution that seemed to satisfy both parties. The applicant's here this evening, and I believe representatives from Highland Fairview, and they can speak probably more specifically to the outcome of that meeting. We also prepared a memo for you this evening recommending the addition of four conditions of approval for the project. Two of those are intended to allow the city to work with the applicant and take them through our process in a little more normal fashion where the state would be responsible for the building. The first two conditions would allow us to work with the applicant and enforce our conditions in a little more standard approach. And that would allow us to work with them to satisfy design requirements on the site aspects of the project with the state being responsible for the building. The last two conditions are intended to address concerns that were raised about the grading along the northern property line as well as a screen wall that would separate this use from the future development in Aquabella. With that, staff would recommend adoption of the environmental documentation as presented to you this evening and approval of the project subject to those additional conditions.
As Jeff concludes his presentation, I just want to elaborate briefly on the memo that was sent to you as the blue copy, since we did give you a lot of information this evening, just to make sure you are focusing on the conditions of approval. And I also would like to compliment the professionalism and respect that both parties, with the Main Street applicant and Highland Fairview, coming together this afternoon to meet and discuss this and come to a resolution, I think, that deserves some note on the record that this is an important project. We consider both Highland Fairview as a key stakeholder in the city, and we look forward to the relationship with the Main Street applicant here on a successful project, and they become a key stakeholder in the city. So that was important for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Thank you very much, Jeff. Does the applicant have a presentation?
Rachel Harmon, I'm the Development Manager for this project, and I just want to thank Jeff and his team for all of the hard work and all of their efforts that have gone into this evening and the preparation for this evening. So, yes, I'm from Main Street, and we develop skilled nursing facilities, and we really focus in transitional care, which is kind of a newer product type. Many people may not really understand what we mean when we do say transitional care, but as Jeff stated, it's really to help people go from transition from hospital to home and to cut down on hospital readmission. Our average length of stay is 14 to 21 days. We service very low acuity level patients, and we feel that this is a really great need in the community. I think it's important to note that with our development, we could be bringing as many as 400 jobs to the city of Moreno Valley, 100 of them being permanent, and the additional being construction jobs. We have over 50 facilities across the United States, either open or under construction, and this would be the first for us in California, so we're very excited about that. We thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Any questions of staff or the applicant? Who was first? Commissioner Lowell?
I have a clarification. When this meeting was supposed to happen last month, a couple residents were asking when they were in advance of the meeting whether or not this facility was going to be a halfway house. I believe the, I know the answer, but I'd just like to hear it from you.
Yes, this will not be a halfway house.
It's intended to take people from a hospital...
Correct.
...treat them, make them better, and send them home.
Correct. The majority of the patients that we see are typically recovering from either an orthopedic or cardiac event, and they just need that little additional help to get them home and get them back on their feet.
Awesome, thank you.
Mr. Sims?
My question is about the, it's probably directed to staff, on the... There's the southerly exit, looks like it goes to the private road that goes north and south. How is that handled? Is there... I didn't see how that is handled. Is there, like, reciprocal access agreements between that whole group of properties that allows ingress egress?
That's correct. So there's a shared access easement and arrangement that would allow for... Chair, you said that driveway, so it's rather than a public street, it's a long, private drive to the benefit of both Kaiser and to the development that will occur on the same parcel map over time. So the dialysis center that's there now accesses their site through that same easement, and this facility would do so as well.
Anyone else? I have a question on the parking. Lighting 127 spaces, which is quite a bit in excess of the requirement. Why so many spaces?
Typically, we try to provide at least a 1.3 parking ratio in our facilities. It's really just to accommodate guests and staff. We don't want people to have to walk too far, of course. So, you know, we're open to amending our parking per the city's request.
I was just curious, in this day and age with lid and water quality...
Right.
...most people put in the minimum parking, so just wondering. Thank you. Anyone else? Questions? All right. At this time, we will open the public hearing and take comments. Do we have any speakers?
Yes, we have two. Rafael Bugeras, followed by Wayne Peterson.
Good evening again, Commissioners, staff, residents, and our guests. Mr. Barnes, when you get a chance, I would love you to ask the applicant, is it, are they going to help the seniors that live in nursing homes or resident, living in residence? Are they going to go there before they go to the hospital? Because I heard from the hospital to there and then home. So are they going to help the elderly people go there first before they wind up at the hospital? That's one question you can ask them. Yes, thank you so much. I went to the site, and I'm glad to hear what she's mentioned because it's going to help Kaiser and all the hospitals send patients to them before they go home to get rehabbed, to get help. And I was hoping that it also will help a person like my mother-in-law who's, has dementia, and she got ill. She wandered up at Riverside Hospital, and she had to stay there for two weeks, and from there, she had to go to a rehab, but it was in Riverside. And my wife was there every day, from morning to night. It's not far, but it ain't close either. So I'm hoping tonight that you approve this project, not to only help my wife, but to help all the mothers and sons, husbands and wives that they're elders, that get sick, that have to go far. We need something like that in our city. I didn't see anything when I drove around, you know, to see if we had something like this. But I also am glad that they have 50 throughout the states, and they're hoping to be the first in Moreno Valley. Remember that, the first in Moreno Valley. I'm hoping that there'll be other ones like that that will come, laser. Many will come to our city to help our residents, but our regional place as a whole, so people don't have to go far, Oklahoma, Arizona. They can come to Moreno Valley right here. They all can join us. It's a nice area, Olive Street and Iris. It's a real nice area for medical centers. So I hope that you approve this tonight, that you will help all the parents, sons and daughters that need help, don't have to go far. It's a nice facility. I looked at the pictures. What color is going to blend in with the neighborhood? On page 146, you know, they're going to have a lot of little places. It's real nice. They're going to build it real nice to blend in with the neighborhood. So I'm hoping that you will approve it, and if it goes well for them and they become successful, like she mentioned, they like doing this work. Maybe they'll build another one for us here in Moreno Valley to accommodate more people. 90 beds, it's okay, but 150 beds, it's a lot better. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Bugeras. Next speaker?
Wayne Peterson.
Good evening, Commissioners. Wayne Peterson with Highland Fairview. As Jeff indicated, we have met with staff and also the main place, I'm sorry, Main Street folks. Very cordial, very friendly, and extremely productive meeting today to resolve some questions that we had. We submitted a letter some time ago before we had an opportunity to sit down with the applicant and understand a lot of the approaches that they're taking with their project. As staff indicated, we share a property line, and making sure that that edge is done as nicely as possible to the benefit of both properties was our purpose in getting involved. Very happy to say that we were able to work out issues. Very flexible approach to finding the right way to deal with that common property line, and two of the conditions of approval that are on the blue sheet today relate to that particular, that particular issue. So we are comfortable that the project addresses our concerns, and we're in support of the project as it's proposed and as proposed to be conditioned. On behalf of Highland Fairview, we want to welcome the Main Street people to Moreno Valley, and we wish them the very best of luck with their project during construction and up in operation, and we're very happy that they're a member of our community, and we're very anxious to be cooperative with them as a next-door neighbor. So happy to answer any questions that the Commission may have at this point.
Thank you. Commissioner Lowell?
I have a question for you. A lot of, a lot of the staff and you and some of the applicants have talked about Highland Fairview having some objections and having some concerns, and there was a mention of a meeting today and having some resolution. Could you give us some insight as to what the objections were and what the resolutions were?
Sure. I mentioned generally that it has to do, has to do with the common boundary. Very typically, a development will deal with a piece of property and keep all of their activities on their own property in order to avoid having to deal with next-door neighbors. Totally understandable. And that's essentially what happened in this case. We reviewed the plans when they were submitted to the city and took a look at them and started thinking that maybe there's a better way to do this and offered to be, tried to be, to offer to be more cooperative and a good neighbor. The end result of it is a grading concept for that edge that has yet to be finalized, but we are confident that between their engineering group and ours, we can find a solution that works for everyone. Essentially, what it involves is allowing Main Street to grade onto Highland Fairview property to come up with a efficient, engineering-smart, environmentally-sensitive, and aesthetically-pleasing solution for both properties. And I, speaking for Highland Fairview, we feel very comfortable that it's a definite win-win. It's the kind of detail that usually gets lost in projects like this, but our concern is now is the time to deal with those things so properties don't become ISOs or maintenance, maintenance problems in the long term. So we thank Rick and his staff for initiating the meeting and coordinating it and polishing some conditions of approval, but like I say, we're very happy with the way it's been resolved, and we look forward to working with them on making all the details work out as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson.
Thank you.
Any other speakers?
No.
All right. This time, we'll close the public hearing and have some discussion. Anyone? Commissioner Lowell?
I have a couple of questions for staff. On the, looks like the southerly access road or parking aisle, it appears to be about 500 feet long, and it appears to be a dead end and a 24-foot-wide drive aisle. I don't see how that's going to be accommodating of anybody trying to find parking, going to the end and realizing there is no parking, and either having to turn around or back up 500 feet. Plus, I don't think that has appropriate fire access. Plus, I don't think that has appropriate fire access.
I'll answer the best I can and then if, if it's incomplete on the fire part, then our fire marshal can, can jump in. The, the design of the project does end, that back drive aisle does end without a through point. It's not full access all the way around the building. There is a courtyard area at the rear of the building that, that satisfies turnaround for fire and any other large vehicles that would need to go back there. And we feel that the drive aisle width is, is wide enough to accommodate the turnaround. The length, the long length of the drive aisle there is, is broken up by that courtyard area that would allow for, for a hammerhead function or turnaround.
They're saying mid parking aisle, they could drive over the curb or into that little entry area?
The, there's an open, not courtyard, maybe that's not the right description. At the rear of the facility, there's a, an open paved area that would, would act as a midpoint turnaround for large vehicles as well as other vehicles that would, would pass down that drive aisle.
If I can take a crack at adding some additional information, it might be helpful as you look at the plan. The notations on the plan have a, a box type of a line that goes around the perimeter of the, the whole facility on the three sides. That boxed line is a, a fire route, designated fire access. And if you follow on the, the south side of the, of the building, you'll see that those boxes turn into that open area. That open area does provide for the turnaround for the large vehicles. With regard to the distance from the, that courtyard area to the end of the drive aisle, we recognize that to be 145 feet, even though the entire length of that, that drive aisle is 500 feet. Or going with your, your number, there's approximately 500 feet. It's the 145 feet dimension where there's a break. And so it's not providing any sort of a, a dimension above 150 feet, which would be concerned for our fire department. Our fire marshal is here and may add some additional detail. The other thing with regard to the 24-foot drive aisle is that we recognize it's a single loaded drive aisle. So you only have parking on the, the south edge. And at the very end of that drive aisle, we do have a design that allows for a, a little pop-out, which allows for the vehicle, the last vehicle on the end, an area to back out and maneuver in the right direction to exit. So it's not leaving them in a, in a tight configuration. So those are some of the considerations during the plan check. That's somewhat typical in, in terms of the things we'll review. But I also have our traffic staff here and our fire marshal if they'd like to add anything.
Yes, Adrian Reinderson, Fire Marshal. Just to confirm what both Jeff and Rick have stated, anything over 150-foot dead end requires a turnaround of some sort. This is in fact 145 feet from that quasi hammerhead turnaround, which we found to be acceptable.
Right. That answers my question. Thanks.
Any other questions, observations, thoughts? Have an opinion on the project?
I'd like to make a motion, I think it's a great project, I think it's something we need in Moreno Valley. And I'd be happy to make a motion to approve it.
I think you should.
Alrighty then. Alright, so I propose to make a motion that the Planning Commission approve Resolution Number 2017-28 and thereby certify that the mitigated negative declaration prepared for conditional use permit, PEN 16-0153, on file with the Community Development Department, has been completed in compliance with SEQA and that the Planning Commission reviewed and considered the information contained in the mitigated negative declaration, a document reflects the city's independent judgment and analysis. And that too, that we adopt the mitigation monitoring reporting program prepared for the conditional use permit, PEN 16-0153. And that, that the Plan Commission approved Resolution Number 2017-29 and thereby approve the conditional use permit, PEN, based on the findings, or PEN 16-0153, based on the findings contained in this resolution and subject to conditions of approval is included as Exhibit A, along with the July 2017 additional conditions that was provided in a staff memo to the Plan Commission.
Honorable Chair, Commission members, I would recommend that you treat those as two separate motions and take action on them separately.
Alright.
So the first action will be on paragraph A and then the second one will be on paragraph B of the recommended actions.
Well, alrighty then.
Alright, do we need a new motion or can we just have two votes?
I say just.
No, we would need a couple of seconds and then, and I don't mean time-wise, I just mean second.
How about you just reread the very first sentence of A, it says, recommend approve resolution number and be done with it.
Okay.
Just that one sentence.
Alrighty then. Further, further, I've proposed.
Don't read one or two, just, just A.
Plan Commission approve Resolution Number 2017-28.
Does it have to be as amended by tonight?
Which resolution do the conditions?
On this one, we just need a second.
I'll second it.
That's only on the environmental documents, so the other one is tied to the project, so you'll reference that on the next one.
Alright, having a motion from Commissioner Sims and a second from Commissioner Lowell. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Lowell?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Sims?
Yes.
Vice Chair Korsec?
Yes.
Chair Barnes?
Yes. Motion passes five to nothing.
Okay. Can I make a second motion now?
No, no you can't.
Of course. Carry on.
What would you care to do?
No, go for it.
You're on a roll.
Alrighty then.
Go.
Okay, so I make a motion that the Plan Commission approve Resolution Number 2017-29 and thereby approve conditional use permit, PEN 16-0153, based on the findings contained in this resolution and subject to the conditions of approval included Exhibit A and the modified, added conditions pursuant to the July 2017 memo from staff.
Second that.
The July 20th, 2017 memo. I think you said July 17th.
Oh, well. Alright. Start again.
We have a motion and a second.
I'll second it.
Commissioner Baker beat you to it.
I'll third it.
Alright. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Lowell?
I say yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Sims?
Yes.
Vice Chair Korsec?
Yes.
Chair Barnes?
Yes. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you very much. Have a wrap-up?
Sure. The action you've just taken is on a conditional use permit. The conditional use permit is a discretionary action taken by the Planning Commission that is appealable to the City Council. If any interested party wants to file an appeal, they can file an appeal within 15 days of this action. That appeal should be directed to the Director of Community Development and if we do receive one, we will work with our city clerk to agendize that within 30 days for a city council consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Moving on. Case two, PEN 16-0001, PEN 16-0007, 16-0002, 16-003, 04, 05, 06. A specific plan amendment tentative parcel map, environmental impact report, and plot plans for four buildings. The applicant is prologist. Do we have a staff report?
We introduce Julia Dakota to give the staff report.
Thank you, Chair Barnes and members of the Planning Commission. The Moreno Valley Logistics Center project will include a development of a total of 1,736,180 square foot of warehouse space on 89.4 acres. The project includes a total of four buildings ranging in size from 97,222 square feet to 1,351,763 square feet. In addition to, in addition, there are four plot plan applications for the buildings. And the project also includes a specific plan amendment and a tentative parcel map. The project is bounded by Heacock Street on the west, Indian Street on the north, and the southerly terminus of the project aligns with Cardinal Way. It is designed for high cube warehousing and e-commerce and/or. The project site is within the Moreno Valley Industrial Area Specific Plan, as are all of the sound, surrounding land uses to the north, south, and west. The vacant site is relatively flat and slopes from north to south. The project is located within the Industrial Area Plan, which was adopted in 1989 and allows for the industrial uses within the southwestern portion of the city. The area within the immediate vicinity is designated for industrial development, much of which is already developed. The areas to the immediate east are developed with single-family residential houses that were constructed from 1987 to 2006. The zoning on these properties is R5 with the minimum of, a maximum of five residential dwelling units to the acre. The tentative parcel map includes a consolidation of the parcels to coincide with the project. Tentative parcel map 36150 will consolidate the three parcels into two parcels with two remaining parcels in the project. The consolidated parcels will be in the parcel one, which is the large building right there, and building number two. As mentioned, the project includes four plot plan applications for each of the four buildings. Building one is proposed as designed to accommodate a high cube warehouse building or e-commerce occupant. The smaller buildings are proposed to accommodate industrial warehousing, manufacturing, assembly, and e-commerce and/or similar use tenants. Building one is just over 1,350,000 square feet and is oriented toward Indian Street, extending from Cremaria Avenue towards the Paris Valley Storm Drain. The street frontage along Indian will include a 14-foot high screen wall, dense landscaping adjacent to the wall, and a water quality feature on the southeast corner of the site. There will be no truck access from Indian Street. Building two is 122,275 square feet and is located on the southern, southerly of Cremaria Avenue and will be accessed from the extension of Cosmos Street to the south. The project includes an alternative site plan that would omit building two and construct 166 space truck trailer parking lot on parcel two. In addition, there is a triangular shaped 2.5-acre parcel at the terminus of Cosmos Street, which is now the part of the project and under a separate ownership. Building three is a maximum of 97,222 square feet and is located south of the Paris Valley Storm Drain Channel on a separate parcel and the access is from Cardinal Avenue. The color, all the buildings will be designed consistent architectural elements, materials, and colors to include vertical and horizontal scoring with varied riff lines at various locations. Colors for the project will include whites, grays, dark, and dark gray colors for accents. There'll be green reflective glazing and metal details used for accents on the buildings. Screen walls will be designed with the same details and colors for consistency. A specific plan application has also been proposed with this application. The text change is limited to modifying the buffering requirement along Indian Street south of Cremaria Avenue to the Paris Valley Storm Drain Channel. The proposal modifies the specific plan text for the setbacks and buffering requirements for the west side of Indian Street to be consistent with the standards that were applied north of Cremaria Avenue to Iris. With this new modification, there is a requirement for 50 feet of landscaping from the property line to the screen wall. An environmental impact report was repaired, was prepared for the project as described in detail in the staff report. A total of 66 mitigation measures were recommended to reduce specific and cumulative impacts. Even with the proposed mitigation, a number of potential impacts cannot be reduced to less than significant level. As specified in Section 5.0 of the EIR document, the impacts that are concluded to be significant and unavoidable include air quality, greenhouse gas emissions, land use planning, and traffic and transportation. These impacts will require overriding findings as described in detail in the staff report. To date, we've received several letters and a few phone calls regarding the project. The, we received two emails, one from George Hague and one from the law offices of Abigail Smith. Both of those were provided to you earlier in the week for your review. Last night and this morning, we received a letter, two letters, one last night, one this morning, from Kathleen Dale. And then we also received several emails from three additional residents. The three additional residents opposed the specific plan amendment. And all of those have been provided to you as well. Some of the, the comments in the letters included the truck traffic on Indian. As proposed by the project, there will be no truck traffic allowed on Indian. The ingress egress location at the southern portion of the site is for autos only and does not, will not accommodate truck traffic. The trucks will enter from Cremaria and Cosmos and they will not be allowed to go right, make a right turn onto Cremaria from the site going towards Indian. We've added a condition of approval, which was provided to you to, in addition to the original conditions of approval that talk about signage for the trucks. And we provided that copy to you prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. All future tenants will develop a truck circulation strategy that will be reviewed and approved by the Planning Division and the Public Works Department. The strategy will address directional signage both onsite and offsite and provide supplemental information regarding truck routes to be available for the site for the purpose of ensuring that trucks do not encroach in the residential neighborhoods. We also received, during the EIR process, we received a comment letter from LaZoe and Drury. And subsequent to the EIR, the draft EIR going out, they have withdrawn their, their letter of opposition to the project. Additional correction that we'll be making in the mitigation monitoring on mitigation measure 4-3-3, it does refer to creating the signage for the three-minute idling. And it, it talks about adding a sign that says five minutes, but below it, it does say that both the construction traffic and the operational trucks will have three-minute idling. So we'll correct that error in the, in the mitigation measures. The environmental impact report was prepared by TMB Planning. We do have Tracy Zinn here, the principal of the company, to provide a brief overview of the EIR as part of staff's presentation.
Well, Tracy comes up, just for real clarification on that signage regarding the five and the three minutes, the correction we're making is to make them all three minutes. So we're making it the more restrictive of the two.
Good evening, Tracy Zinn with the consulting firm TMB Planning and we were the primary author of the EIR. Also here to respond to any technical questions you may have is David Ornella, Senior Project Manager with our office, and Charlene Cho, the Consulting Traffic Engineer. The final EIR before you tonight represents a complete analysis of the proposed project as required by SEQA. And it objectively presents the information to allow the city to make an informed decision on the environmental effects of the project. And in many instances, as you may And in many instances, as you may hear me describe, the analysis that was conducted in many of the technical studies and presented in the E I R use conservative analysis methodologies. So some of the reporting in the documentation overstates the impacts that will actually occur. The E I R's notice of preparation was released for public review in June of two thousand fifteen, and the draft E I R was released in July of two thousand sixteen. The city received eight comment letters on the draft E I R during that public review period. All of the comments were responded to in writing, and the comment letters and the responses should be before you as part of the final E I R. The sixty-six, I counted sixty-eight, sixty-six to sixty-eight mitigation measures that will be imposed by the city cover the topics of aesthetics, air quality, biological resources, cultural resources, greenhouse gas emissions, hazards, hydrology, noise, and traffic. These mitigation measures are in addition to the city's conditions of approval that are placed on each building, an application, design features that are proposed by the project, some of which reduce or avoid environmental effects, and all of the mandatory regulatory requirements that are imposed as a matter of law by the city and the state and federal government. After application of the mitigation measures, the design features, and the regulatory requirements, as Julia mentioned, there are a few environmental impacts that are not feasible to mitigate to less than significant. And as she mentioned, those are air quality, greenhouse gas, transportation and traffic. And we had, also identified a land use impact associated with air quality. Because there's an air quality emissions impact, the E I R found that the project would can, would not comply with the South Coast Air Quality Management District's air quality management plan. As also mentioned, in the past few days, the city's received some comment letters. Some of those did address the E I R and particularly the buffer along Indian Street and the applicant's proposal to reduce the setback. The E I R is obligated to evaluate the project as proposed by the applic, by the applications, which it does. So I just wanted to touch on a few facts regarding the findings of the environmental report, environmental impact report regarding the edge condition along Indian. As mentioned, none of the project's truck traffic will travel on Indian adjacent to the project site. Previously mentioned, all of the truck access will be taken from Cremaria and Cosmos. There is a driveway in the southeast corner of the building one site. The project as designed does not allow trucks to exit that driveway. However, in one of the comment letters and someone may bring up tonight, some of the scenarios in the E I R do show trucks exiting from that driveway. The reason that analysis is included in the E I R is because at some point in the future, it's anticipated that Indian Avenue Bridge will be constructed over the channel. So the city wanted to make sure that the analysis covered a scenario to show what fair, fair share contributions the project would be required to contribute to south of the project. So in all instances where that makes a difference, meaning the traffic study, the air quality reporting, the noise reporting, the health assessment reporting, the E I R includes a with and without Indian Avenue Bridge over the channel analysis, so you can see it both ways. Regarding noise along that edge, the only significant impact that the E I R reports will occur is construction impacts. And how the modeling occurs is all of the construction equipment is assumed to be simultaneously operating at the property boundary. So regardless of whether the setback is a hundred feet or three hundred feet, the modeling would still be the same. So that impact would occur in either situation. For, some of the comments brought up health risk and diesel particulate matter that the residents may be exposed to. A health risk assessment was prepared using two different methodologies. In both methodologies, the health risk is determined to be less than significant, which means less than ten, ten persons in a million chance of, of cancer, which is how the, the modeling is conducted. In both scenarios, the impact is less than significant. Some of the comments indicated that the cancer risk is pushing the envelope or reaching ten. In the methodology that is recommended by the South Coast Air Quality Management District, the results are six. But we did include the more conservative methodology recommended by the California Office of Environmental Health Hazard. That's not recommended to be used for CEQA purposes, but we frequently, and the city frequently gets comments asking for that methodology to be applied. And under that methodology, the result is nine. So that said, the background risk in that area is zero point zero, zero, nine percent. And to that, the project would be adding a very small increment. Would moving the building back further from where it is currently proposed to what the specific plan would cause to occur make a difference? We have a fifteen-hundred-page modeling result on that, and the difference is nearly immeasurable. So I just wanted to point those out because those items were included in the comment letters. So to recap, the conclusions by, drawn by the E I R, all of the environmental effects of the project can be reduced to below a level of significance, except for the four that require, would require the city council to adopt a statement of overriding consideration. And again, that is air quality, greenhouse gas, land use associated with the air quality management plan, inconsistency, and transportation and traffic due to the project's traffic circulating to areas outside the city. And the city cannot compel other jurisdictions to make improvements, even though the, the project applicant is required to contribute fair share fees. That's a lot of data, and there's a lot more. I could probably talk for an hour. So I will, I will stop there and be available for questions. Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Couple additional items is that currently, there is no bridge proposed for, over the storm drain. It is a capital project, and I can let transportation answer any questions regarding that. But even with a, a, a bridge there, the truck route is not intended to ever go north of that channel. Also, one other comment that was brought up in some of the comment letters was regarding solar for the, the roof. And based on Airport Land Use Commission and being close to March Air Reserve Base, although the buildings will be constructed to be able to accommodate it, the applicant, should they wish to do solar, would have to come back in to not only the city, but the Airport Land Use Commission and get approval from that agency as well as March Air Reserve Base. With that, that concludes staff's report. When you bring the applicant up, they do have a short presentation as well. But at this time, I'll conclude staff's presentation and recommend that the Planning Commission approve the resolution and thereby recommend that the city council certify the environmental impact report, adopt the mitigation monitoring and reporting program for the final E I R, adopt the fact and findings and statement of overriding considerations, approve the specific plan amendment, and approve the four plot plans associated with the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Julia. Would the applicant like to make a presentation?
Yeah. Hello. I think we do have a small PowerPoint presentation that we'll bring up, so. Good evening, Planning Commission members. My name is Tyson Chave. I'm the Investment Officer with Prologis in the Inland Empire. I wanted to share just some brief information on Prologis. Some of you may have heard of us, but I thought it would help for background purposes. Prologis is a publicly traded company. We operate in twenty countries. We have over three thousand buildings globally, and we, we have more than five thousand customers within those buildings. We've been in business since nineteen eighty-three, and we have been awarded the Global One Hundred Most Sustainable Company Award for nine years running, something we're pretty proud of. Locally, to kind of bring it to home, in the Inland Empire, we have approximately forty-five million square feet of warehouse distribution space with a small, and that's in about a hundred and fifteen buildings, with a small but growing presence in Moreno Valley. The, in Moreno Valley, you probably saw it on your way into the meeting, but we are under construction on a six-hundred-one-thousand-square-foot building just immediately east of here. And we're very excited about that building. We're also very excited about this opportunity to expand our presence in the city. Our customers are our lifeline. And this slide represents just a small sample of some of the customers with which, whom we have extensive relationships. Interesting to note, one of the bullets on here, but really jumped out at me. We have, we average over twenty leases globally with our top twenty-five customers. Kind of shows the, the breadth and depth of the relationships that we have. So enough on Prologis. I'm certainly available to answer any additional questions. But I'm now going to turn it over to Scott Mulkey, who's our Regional Head of Construction, to talk a little bit more specifically about the project.
Thank you, Tyson, Commissioners, city staff. Again, my name is Scott Mulkey. I'm Vice President and Development Manager for this particular project. Not only is Prologis a developer, but I think it's also important to note we're a long-term holder of our properties. We have coworkers who both manage the property. We have maintenance technicians on staff who ensure that it is upkept to the highest standards of aesthetics, quality, and sustainability. Tyson touched on us being named for the ninth time to the Global One Hundred list of the most sustainable companies. As you can see on this slide, there are numerous awards and recognitions. In addition, last year, we were ranked on Newsweek's U.S. Greenest Companies for the third consecutive year. While these recognitions speak to our overall stewardship, the project is the most important aspect of our sustainability efforts. To this point, the project will be built to lead standards. There was discussion of the roof being solar-ready. I would like to point out to that, we are the third-largest owner of rooftop solar in the United States. We have over a hundred megawatts of rooftop solar. We do use LED lighting. We are proposing electric vehicle charging stations. There's low-impact aesthetically pleasing landscape design amongst others. In addition to the sustainability efforts of the project, there are numerous financial benefits this project will provide to the city and its residents. As you can see, the net fiscal revenue will be just under one hu, one million dollars annually. The project will create and sustain an estimated six hundred new permanent direct and indirect jobs for the city of Moreno Valley. In addition, the project will generate an estimated household earning of between twenty-one and twenty-six million dollars annually, which over the course of the eleven years is, as you can see, in the two-hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar range. Additionally, the increased economic output estimated for the city of Moreno Valley is, is approximately a hundred million dollars per year. Again, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to present our project. I'd also like to reserve some time at the end for my team to address or respond to any comments as necessary that may come up. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone have questions of staff or the applicant? I have a question. In going through the conditions, I only saw conditions for the four buildings, not for the tentative map.
It'll take me a moment to look through the conditions, but we do have conditions of approval for the map.
Okay, alright. I, I couldn't find him, so. Anybody? No? Alright, Eric, could you talk about the status of the bridge? Just general information.
Yes, Eric Lewis, City Traffic Engineer. The bridge is, as mentioned earlier, an unfunded C I P project. It's part of our circulation system to connect both, both sides of the bridge. But currently, it's unfunded.
Is there any kind of a priority rating on that? I know, being unfunded, obviously, the priority's low. Any idea when that may float to the top or?
Not at this time. It is an important link for emergency routing and, and just generally, you know, traffic that wants to use the area, certainly not for trucks, but no idea at this point.
Okay. It's just a lower priority than other things on the list.
Correct.
We'll stay that way until, okay, alright. Alright, let's move to the public comments. At this point, I'd like to open the public hearing. Do we have any speakers?
We do. Rafael Bugeras, followed by Michael Day.
Good evening, Commissioners again, staff, residents, and our guests. Tonight was a pretty important. You got to hear answers of some of the questions that residents had about trucking, going down some Indiana Street, buffing. I mean, you got answers. No trucks are allowed to go down residential streets. That's a fact. There's going to be buffing from the property line to the wall. According to what I read, they're going to go from fifteen feet to fifty feet. That's a lot, a buffing. And, and it's going to have its own decor, trees, brushes and everything. So what I like about this developer and what I learned about his presentation on the buildings they make for these important companies that we shop at daily, I didn't know what they do for our country and our state. I went around P and G, probably in Gambo, and I looked at that building for the first time when I first saw this item come up. I went around the whole, I mean, that's, I mean, I went around the whole block, and this place was well landscaped. The walls were high. You couldn't see the trucks inside. So the people that live across the street from these, from this particular building have it well-made. Because when you drive up and down Iris from, from Paris to Hecat, and you look at this building, it's well-built. You don't see anything out of its place. Everything is in its place. And I even went there at night to see how the trucks were handling themselves. And, and way on the other side of the building, that's where all the trucks at. They're nowhere near Iris. So they have it well-planned how to make this city safe and effective, especially environmental. So even your solar question got answered by one of the top three people in the world. They're doing well. So by adding this project to our committee, community, will be an enhancement, not only to the region, but to the men and, to the men and women that are looking for work. I'm hoping that this local that's sitting behind me is part of that workforce. Because I know that every man that's sitting behind me is relying on a check every week to provide for their family themselves. That's important, because I used to be a teamster. So I know what it's like to go out there and work for a living. Everybody gets a piece of development. This is what's great about development. Everybody gets a piece of it. Nobody fails short of it. By approving this project, all we do, we're going to enhance, once again, that dirt that's across the street from P and G to look nice in the neighborhood. If they do the same job that they did for that development, the people around that area would just be wonderful to see that dirt not hit their houses or be on their property any longer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bugeras.
Michael Day?
Evening. Commissioner, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. Excuse me. My name is Michael Day. I'm with Lyona, the Labor's International Union of North America, Local eleven eighty-four, Riverside Imperial County. We, we represent over four thousand members in the Riverside and Imperial County. And we're here in full support of the project. We've had the pleasure and the honor of entering into a partnership, a true partnership with Prologis. And, and one in that will employ hundreds, if not thousands, of construction workers that will work on this project and many others in the area, including across the street. As part of that, As part of that partnership, Prologis has entered into agreements that in turn will lead to relationships with contractors and subcontractors and EPC contractors that will provide livable wages, local hire provisions for local residents that are true stakeholders in these types of projects, to provide health insurance, benefits, and pension retirements. These things that are crucial to provide for them and their families and to retire with dignity. So that being said, in addition, there's apprenticeship programs, safe work environments. I can go on and on about the partnership we've entered into with Prologis on this, not only this project, but many projects. So with that being said, I can only urge the Commission to approve the project. It's a good project. It's going to put, if not, probably thousands of people to work. You've heard some of the statistics, but what's more important is that you realize that these projects are temporary, part-time, temporary, full-time construction jobs. So the members will finish across the street and move on to the next project, and then the next project. So at the end of that period of time, they hope to have pensions and retirements and things that are provided them through the relationships with these developers. So with that being said, I'm here to answer any questions, and I'd like to encourage the Commission to approve this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have a question for you. Your group proposed objections and questions to the EIR. What were your original questions and objections, and then why did you recant them?
Well, as we enter into some of that discussions, you know, we have members that are stakeholders here in the community, so they have environmental concerns and true investment interests in those projects. So we look to partner and to move to make sure that the environmental interest of our membership is part of that relationship and that, again, resolve with the collective bargaining agreements once we do work through this process with the developers.
So what were your original objections?
I'm not, original objections, you know, I'd have to refer to the legal, to counsel on that. I wasn't prepared to speak to that tonight, but I couldn't answer those questions for you this evening.
Okay. My concern was that you guys had legitimate concerns and questions on the EIR.
Well, as far as the, I'm sorry.
And then you just announced there, up there on your three minutes, that your Teamsters Union came into some sort of agreement with Prologis, that you guys get work from them, and then you recanted your objections to the Environmental Impact Department. It seems kind of you cried wolf, saying, "Oh, look at the environment. Oh, but we got working jobs out of it, so we don't care about the environment anymore."
That's a very good question. As part of any settlement, any environmental settlement, some of those concerns are mitigated and concerns are brought to light. I think some of that's been done through the process with, through some of the changes in the EIR and some of the stuff I heard this evening. So if some of those things are addressing concerns, and if we can enter into some partnerships with the developers, then, you know, that's common goals on behalf of the key stakeholders and our members that live in this community. So to speak to more to that, I mean, I have no problem, you know, getting back to you and speaking to you indirectly about that. If you can, you know, I'm here, I can leave my card and my number here with you, but anything I can do to answer that question, I'll do for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker.
Kathleen Dale.
Kathleen Dale, a lifelong Moreno Valley resident and retired planner and environmental consultant. You should have two packages of written comments from me. One is eight pages and one is sixteen pages. A lot of that is attachments that are excerpts from the EIR documents or the specific plan. I think it's a shame, really, that the specific plan hasn't really achieved what it envisioned as providing a mix of uses, and particularly providing less intense, non-trucking intensive uses at the interface with the residential areas. So there you have it. We have a monoculture of warehouses instead. So even though the project that's before you is in fact permitted under the specific plan, there are several issues with the record before you that need to be corrected before you can take any affirmative action. One of the major impediments is that the specific plan is now inconsistent with the municipal code, and the specific plan amendment that is being requested is inconsistent with the municipal code. And you cannot make the required findings of municipal code consistency for the specific plan amendment, the Building One Plot Plan, or the parcel map that creates the lots for parcel or for Building One and Two. Stepping, you know, ahead and putting aside the municipal code section and just looking at the proposed project, there are a lot of issues with the layout for Building One that with some minor modifications, it could be made much more compatible with the adjacent neighborhood and also meet several requirements of the specific plan and the municipal code that are not met under the current design. And those include complying with the specific plan setback on Indian, which it's unclear if it's 250 feet or 300 feet, and that's based on the record that's before you. Also, to restrict truck access so that all the truck access for Building One comes in on Cosmos, which is similar to what the P&amp;G building does. And then also to do a design similar to the P&amp;G building, and if you drive around that building and look, all of their onsite truck movement is confined within their fourteen-foot tie, high-screening walls, which contrary to what Rafael said, do not screen the trucks. I drove down Indian. You can see the trucks sticking over the top of the wall that are in the parking spaces, and I could hear through my closed car windows with the air conditioning on, the backup alarms from the trucks that were in that dock area. So there are still compatibility issues at that interface. I wanted to try, I don't see the clock going, so what are we doing here?
Sorry, having electronic issues this evening.
I'm not going to repeat all the things that are in the written comments to you, but there are issues with municipal co-consistency. There are issues with the site design meeting the municipal code and specific plan standards. There are twenty-six items I was able to pull together with my initial review of the EIR with errors or omissions or required clarifications in the project description, the mitigation monitoring program, the impact analyses for air hazards, land use noise, traffic utilities, the alternatives, and the response to comments. I wanted to just address a couple of things that were said in the staff and applicant's presentations and in the response to the letter to Abigail Smith. So this issue about whether or not trucks are going to use driveway six and come north from Indian, it's just something that's inconsistent in your record. And I think as long as the action that you take and the record that you create from this hearing makes it clear, are they using it? Is it an option to use it? Are they not using it? Just make it clear, because right now, the documentation is inconsistent, and the way it's set up, sometime in the future, when the bridge goes, everything is in place to let trucks start coming into that driveway, except that the plot plan design doesn't accommodate them.
Thank you, Kathy. I think you're well past your three minutes.
Okay. Well, may I just say, please send the project back to staff and the applicant to make some modifications and bring it back so that you can approve it. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Tom Gerald Sr.
Tom Gerald Sr., speaking on behalf of myself, Chair Barnes, Vice Chair Korsec, Commissioners, members of the staff and the public, both here in the chambers and watching at home on MBT3 TV or on the net. I support the project for the following reasons. Number one, it's in the industrial area of the city. It was a long, 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 long time ago established. I was on the original general plan committee, I'm talking about eighty-five to, actually, we were still in session until about eighty-nine, till the planning commission wrapped up everything, and they brought us back for a final stamp of approval. Eighteen-member people, but this area of the city was not only always designated as industrial, but the word was heavy industrial. It was, as they say, if we have it, that's where it should be. So, you know, it goes a long, long history and going back, you know, to the early, early days of the city. It's a logical continuation of the land use plan there. It's pretty established. It's already creating good, in this case, union jobs. That's outstanding. That's great. It's good to see organized labor supporting a project. Prologis is a good, established, experienced, world-class developer. I mean, you saw their credentials. I've seen them before, a couple of years ago, on some of the other projects, so they're very, very established. They're toughening it out. They've been through some hard times in Moreno Valley during the recession, and they're still here, so they've got staying power. So I'm in further financially, you know, well-heeled, and that's a good thing. But finally, I'm always concerned about the message that our city sends out to any of the business and/or development community, particularly credible people. You know, there's some people that aren't really top-flight in the industry, but then there are some that are, and it's important that we send out the welcome mat. It doesn't mean we've got to roll over and say, "Do you have anything you want?", but you know, we can set standards for quality and good traffic circulation, good environmental standards, but at the same time entice business and development to our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Any other speakers? Erica?
No, sorry.
No problem. All right. Having no other speakers on the list, we will close the public hearing and deliberate. Anybody have any questions or comments?
I think this is a good project. It's in the right place. We need to move forward with it.
Who else?
I also agree. I think it's a great project. Since there's been a lot of question, concerns about which direction the trucks are supposed to go, what is the ideal truck route from the site to the freeway?
Eric Lewis will answer that question.
The intent is to access Heacock Street via Chremaria, and ultimately, Heacock Street will push southerly, will be pushed southerly to Harley Knox, which will provide a direct access to the 215. So this project would either have trucks go north or south on Heacock and take access to the 215 via Cactus or Harley Knox.
Does Chremaria currently cross the Paris Valley Storm drain channel? On the plot plan, it doesn't show that it does.
No, it does not. It goes around it.
So what you said was we'd take Chremaria to Heacock, but we can't physically get there, so how would we get there?
Cosmos. So Chremaria and then northerly on Cosmos and then out Chremaria again. So it's, originally, it was supposed to be a reverse curve in there, and it was kind of adjusted to a squared-off roadway configuration to make the building square, so you can't build.
Gotcha.
Curvalinear buildings.
Okay. And then the other question I was going to ask was, since we have these truck routes and we have an idling limit, what do we have as far as a mechanism for enforcement? Do we have additional police officers that are going to be going out and making sure that the trucks stay on the truck routes? What happens if they're found off the truck route? And how do we enforce the idling limits?
Well, I can address the enforcement of the truck routes. The city has created a specific commercial enforcement team. They have a special vehicle outfitted for doing so, and they're heavily involved in this area, especially with the Amazon facility and the like, and so they're out there making their presence known and writing citations, so.
I like hearing that. How about the idling? Is that same enforcement team going to be involved in the idling process or the idling limits?
The idling is a requirement of the operator to keep a log of the trucks that come onto the site, and they'll basically be keeping a log of that activity. So we would have an opportunity to look at the log with regard to how the trucks are there. It can be a challenge with regard to being onsite on a continuous basis. That will not be the case. If there is a condition that our code enforcement officer were asked to investigate, that would be one way to go out and also check some balances, but it is not, I just don't want to portray it to be an easy thing that is easy to monitor, but it's a requirement of the project.
Thank you.
What else?
Negative.
Well, hearing no comments, I think it's motion time.
Mr. Chairman, you had asked a minute ago about the conditions for the map. Julia was going to go back and print some hard copies. We've noticed in our packet that there are some pages that are missing, but the conditions that, from our land development group, that are specific to the map, if you turn to page fourteen thirty-eight, and fourteen seventy-five in particular, if you have fourteen seventy-five, I didn't have that in my packet here, so I apologize. But on fourteen thirty-eight, which I think everybody will have, you'll notice that the TPM, thirty-six-one, I gotta put my glasses on, thirty-six-one fifty, which refer to Buildings One and Two.
Right.
Those are conditions that are specific to that map. There are also similar conditions for Buildings Three and Four. I've asked Julia to make the conditions for the full consideration of the Commission. If you did not have those, our apologies.
Take a recess and read these before we vote, or?
It's your prerogative, but I think you're going to find that those conditions are what you've already seen here, but also your action this evening is a recommendation for the project to go forward to the City Council, so ultimately, when it goes to the City Council, all that stuff will be in for the final action.
Seriously, I guess I will leave that up to my fellow Commissioners, so do we have an issue with having not reviewed the conditions? Okay. The suggestion is that we take a brief recess and we go through the conditions, just so that we can say we've seen them and...
That's fine by me. One other thing, Chris and I were just talking, I don't recall during the public comments if you did allow the applicant to rebut any of the input from the community. I think they had made that specific request. I couldn't tell you before you closed the hearing, so.
You're right, I did not.
You may want to consider, I can talk to the city attorney about how that might be handled, and if we can talk to the applicant, if they don't have an interest, then maybe we don't have to address that, but I just wanted to.
You're right. Yes, my apologies to the applicant. I was quick on the trigger. Recommendation?
There's no issue. You can allow the applicant to address any comments that they wish to do.
All right, just bring them forward.
Certainly.
All right. Would you like to make further comment?
Before I introduce Hans, I would like to say one thing, since there has been a few comments about the Indian Street Bridge. We, as the project applicant, we are not a proponent of the bridge. We are not looking for the bridge to be built to serve this building. We have intended to construct the building so that it served via the truck routes that were designated there on Chremaria, Cosmo, and over to Heacock. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Hans.
Hi, I'm Hans. My name is Hans Van Leiden. I'm a partner with the law firm of Rutan and Tucker, and I'm Land Use and Secret Counsel for the project applicant. And let me echo briefly the comments made by everyone else on our team. We appreciate all the hard work staff has done to bring it to this point. It's been a long haul, but been worth the effort. I'm going to briefly address the comments relating to the state planning and zoning law and your municipal code. We don't think it's an obstacle to the recommendation this evening, as has been portrayed, for the very simple reason that you are being asked to make a recommendation on an amendment to the specific plan, which is a legislative action, as it was originally adopted. It was a legislative action, and the City Council is ultimately the body that makes decisions about whether to approve or disapprove legislative actions. Contrary to what Ms. Dale said, there's no requirement that a specific plan be consistent with the zoning ordinance. To the contrary, state law makes it clear that the specific plan need be consistent with the general plan, which your staff has made detailed findings on why it is, and the amendment will not be inconsistent with the general plan, and in fact, will further many of the goals in the general plan. So, and I would specifically, just for purposes of the records, direct anyone who wishes to look to Government Code Section 65453 subdivision A, which states that the specific plan may be amended from time to time at the discretion of the City Council. That's because it is an, it is a legislative action, and state law specifically authorizes the very action we're contemplating now, and we appreciate the consideration, and once again, ask for the positive recommendation to the City Council, the conclusion of your deliberations. If you have any questions, feel free to ask.
Thank you very much, and again, my apologies for the oversight.
No problem. Thank you.
I'm a rookie. Thank you. Now, back to some time to go through the conditions. Can we take a...
I would definitely recommend that you take the time to look through the conditions of approval to make yourself comfortable with that. conditions of approval to make yourself comfortable with that. We've also made copies of that same document that's in front of you, available for the public if they'd like to look through it. Some of the conditions that are already reflected in that document are going to be reflected in the plot plan resolution, so the, some of it is duplicate, but we want to make sure you're comfortable, so please take the time.
All right, then, let's take a ten-minute recess to review the conditions, we'll adjourn, or reconvene rather, at five after nine. At this time, we'd like to reconvene the meeting, please. No. All right, having, having taken some time to review the conditions, do the Commissioners have any questions of staff?
Is this an additional, this brown color?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. That's a good, so we get to the point that we're making a motion, we'll clarify which this gets attached to.
That would be on building one and two.
Building one and two?
Yes.
Thank you, Julia. All right, does anyone have anything on the additional information we received?
No, but I'd like to make a little comment on it. I don't have like a question.
Then I have a question after you're done, go ahead.
In, in my tenure working with WQMPs, it's always difficult to try to nail down which specific criteria we're supposed to be held to, because over the last ten years, the WQMP criterias have been changed and modified and updated, and trying to figure out when and where and how we've been grandfathered. I would like to actually commend staff on page twenty-two, land development condition number ninety-three, it actually explicitly states that this project has to conform to a specific WQMP date, the two thousand and six criteria, and that is something that is very rare in conditions where you get to know exactly what WQMP you're supposed to be held to, so it was just a point that I'd like to thank you guys for putting that in explicitly, because it's always a, a sticking point and a big, and a big bump that you have to deal with, so, thank you, guys.
I have a question on the TE, condition TE ten from case oh four, and it has to do with payment of fees to the city of Paris. I have a lousy memory, but I remember, I think I remember previous cases where there was discussion of improvements outside the city limits being out of our control. I don't recall seeing conditions requiring payments to adjacent cities, is, is that something that's newly negotiated, or has that been in place a long time and I just would not run across it?
It's been a common, common theme for projects that border adjacent jurisdictions, where they would have impacts in, in those jurisdictions.
Okay, okay. Is that a formal agreement between adjacent cities, or?
It's.
You just do it to benefit?
It, it's to satisfy the SEQA requirements to mitigate all impacts for the project.
Okay, regardless of city jurisdiction lines, et cetera.
Correct.
Oh, okay, all right, thank you. And then the other question I had was, I see in the conditions that the project's required to do a Clomar and Lomar. Is the channel fully improved?
Yes, it is, this is Michael Lloyd with the Land Development Division, yes, the channel is in place per the master plan.
Then why would the property still be in the flood zone? Wouldn't the channel take it out?
Excellent question, I don't have the answer, my guess is, this is a cleanup action to take care of the fact that the storm drain is in place and should be removed.
Map was never revised.
From the flood zone, correct.
All right, okay, that's my questions. Somebody want to make a motion? Oh, before we make the motion, the motion, sorry, it's a two-parter, correct?
Two separate resolutions, two separate actions.
Yeah, similar to the previous A and B?
Exactly.
Okay, so whoever makes the motion, if you would just do paragraph A or B, well, A first.
I'll make a motion. My paper's in order here. I would like to make a motion that we approve resolution number two zero one seven dash one six. Do I need to add an amendment for this sheet here tonight?
I think that's on the next one, that's on the conditions of approval.
You're acting on, you're acting on the resolution for the environmental impact report first.
Right, and that's it, that's part of it.
Do I need to read the certify and adopt, or can I just stop at the resolution number?
You can just state the resolution number, and that's a sufficient motion, unless there's an amendment to it, which would be included.
I'm, I'm asking the staff on the revised condition that we're putting on the project, which I just want to know what resolution we're going to add that one to.
That would be added to resolution number twenty seventeen dash nineteen.
Okay, so you don't have to add that to this one yet.
Yeah, it's on the next one.
Okay, so my motion was to approve resolution number two zero one seven dash one six. Have a second?
As presented.
As presented.
Second?
I'll second that.
Motion, motion by Commissioner Lowell, second by Commissioner Baker, can we have a roll call?
Commissioner Lowell?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Sims? Vice Chair Korsak?
Yes.
Chair Barnes?
Yes. Motion passes five to zero.
I would also like to make a motion to approve resolution number two zero one seven dash one eight, two zero seven dash one nine, as amended tonight by this document, and resolution number two zero one seven dash two zero, that's it.
And the map conditions.
Isn't that part of it?
So we, did we add the map conditions?
That's, that's as amended, right.
Oh.
As amended, okay.
Okay.
So let me rephrase that. I'd like to, motion to approve resolution number two zero one seven dash one eight, two zero seven dash one nine, as amended, and two zero one seven dash two zero, and as amended tonight.
Sufficient, all right.
I'll second that.
Second from Commissioner Baker. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Lowell?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Sims?
Yes.
Vice Chair Korsak?
Yes.
Chair Barnes?
Yes, motion carries five to zero. Thank you very much, do we have a staff wrap-up?
Yes, the actions you've taken this evening are recommendations on the project that will be carried forward to the city council. We do not yet have a date set for the city council, but when we agendize that, we will let you know, and the public notices put out, it's required as a public hearing before the, the city council. It is an action of the planning commission, and our code does say that any action of the planning commission can be appealed to the city council, so on a literal interpretation of our code, if somebody wanted to object, they could file an appeal and it'd still be taken forward to the, to the city council, it's going to get to the same spot. Thanks.
Thank you, Rick. Any other closing comments? All right, well, Commissioner Lowell?
Earlier in the week, or actually last week, Chairman Barnes, myself, Commissioner Baker, and Mr. Rick Sanzamire went to a planning commission meeting, a training seminar, planning commissioners, we've got this nice little handout called Planning Commissioner Toolkit, we also got this book called Planning Healthy Communities, and what was presented in front of us, and in front of about another hundred planning commissioners from all across the state, was quite informative, telling us different ways of using creative designs, creative concepts, unique solutions to planning and urban developments. As a result of it, I would try to figure out if there's any way that one of our planning commissioners could be involved in the early planning of a project, because some of our insights might help develop or redesign their project, or give a better idea of how the city will, how the residents will receive a project.
I can look into that, my, my initial reaction this evening is to tread cautiously on that, because you don't want to put yourself in a position where you might conflict yourself out on the project, but I can look into it and have an answer for you by the next meeting, if there's a way for that to happen. So that would be my initial reaction. With regard to the books that you just referenced, I do have the two extra copies for the two commissioners that were not able to attend, and I'll give those to you before we leave them up.
They, they sent it to us in the mail, we got them.
Oh, you did, great.
That was it, thank you.
Anything else?
From a staff, from a staff point of view, I'd like to indicate that the city just had a workshop with the community on crime prevention through environmental design. It was an opportunity, part of our strategic plan initiatives, it's an opportunity to make the, the community aware of some of the stuff that we do here in the Community Development Department, working in concert with the Police Department. Crime prevention through environmental design is, is a strategy or a technique used to look at how the plans that are coming before us, from the infrastructure, the buildings, the building layout, the parking lot designs, landscaping, how they can be designed to actually thwart the possibility for crime, to reduce the fear of crime. The attendance at the, at the workshop was not a full room, but there was people that have given us positive feedback, and they had suggested that at some point in the future, this would be a good training for the planning commission, and maybe even other commissions in the city, so I just want to let you know, if you do hear that from your community members, we'll be looking into that the next time we put together a training like that. We do have some books on using crime prevention through environmental design, and I'll make those available to you, to the planning commissioners as well. I will be, just one last announcement, I'll be on vacation for the next week in my absence, should you have any questions or concerns, you can direct your attention to Mr. Ormsby, and I'll look forward to seeing you guys next month at the next meeting.
Thank you, Rick. Well, with that, I think that concludes the meeting, I'll welcome the, tonight's applicants to the city of Marina Valley, and with that, we're adjourned to the next regularly scheduled meeting, which is August twenty-fourth. All right, Jeff's birthday, so everyone wear colored hat. All right, thanks very much, and good night, drive, drive safely.